Well, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
And thank you for turning out. I'm Ken Seiver, your mayor. We have, and those of us in elected office, and by the way, Councilman Daniel Brightwell is representing the council tonight. Dan, you want to stand? The council and I have, for quite some time, received lots of complaints, concerns, issues about the deer herd in Southfield. There are a whole number of people who want the city to do something about it. And it's really a very complicated issue. Personally, you cannot, deer don't know municipal boundaries. They don't respect them. The deer population has grown because we've had mild winters. I've learned a lot about deer over the years, thanks to the DNR. For instance, I didn't know that does never have experienced menopause. So, and they have one, two offspring a year. As you know, they're, probably know, their biggest predator is the automobile in an area like this. And we really feel that we need a regional solution. But again, we have so many people saying, can't you do something? I'm concerned, you know, all kinds of concerns. And it's not just about landscaping. It's about ticks and Lyme disease and any number of things. So, we decided that, the council and I decided that we would form a wildlife committee to try and give us more data, rather than try to just make a decision blindly. So, for the last couple of years, and you'll hear from the chair of the Wildlife Commission in a minute, for the last couple of years, we have been gathering data. We actually do a flyover survey of deer in February, so that we can see, in the snow, how many deer are in a given area. You've got a map, I think, that shares that data with you. So, there's a couple of ground rules tonight. I want to make it very clear that we know that people have very strong opinions about the deer herd. Tonight is not a debate. I'm going to repeat that. Tonight is not a debate. We are not going to debate whether there should be a cull, or we should do nothing, or the deer were here first. And I've heard, you know, we've all heard everything. So, this is, this is really an information session. Earlier, the commission did a survey. Unfortunately, not very many people responded to the survey. It was put online, perhaps 400?
Not even that, like 250.
250 people responded. That's not enough information. So, something I've advocated for quite a while is, why don't we put on the ballot a non-binding referendum where you can voice your opinion? So, while we're not debating tonight, you do get your chance in, on November 8th, to say yes or no. And this is important feedback for the city council. If the city council, and there's, and by the way, I want to stress, no decision has been made. We're just asking, what do you think? Because we hear from so many people. But there's no decision. And even, let's say, majority of people who respond at the polls on November 8th say yes, we should reduce the herd. It doesn't mean the city council is going to do anything, because herd reduction costs And as you'll hear from the DNR and the commission, there are, there are ways, but we really are not going to get into what would happen if we had a cull, because it's very, very premature. I do want to say that I appreciate the work of the commission. They've worked, what, three years?
About two.
Two and a half years. And we've gathered a lot of data. So, once again, this is an information session, explaining the ballot issue, but also explaining why we're even asking the question. And again, a lot of it is because many of you have commented to us that your feelings about this. So, again, pro and con. So, with that, I'm going to turn the podium over to David Schaefer, who is the chair of the Southfield Wildlife Commission. David?
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. David Schaefer, I'm the chairman of the Southfield Wildlife Commission. We've been doing this about two, two and a half years. And I just want to take a minute to introduce some of the other commissioners that are here. We don't have everyone, but we've got Jennifer Orman over here along the wall, Joel Malinsky down here in the corner, Janelle Constan over along the back wall, and Tiffany, are you in here? Tiffany Gottscher is also a member of the commission. I'm not seeing her, as well as Michelle Merritt, who is just walking in as she comes in now. And then also Sarah Vermiglio, who had her school rescheduled something for her kids, so she couldn't make it tonight. But anyways, I'm really glad that everyone turned out tonight. I'm happy to see a good turnout here, because really, this is about getting you all information so that you can make informed decisions when you're sharing your views in November, and just help the city as we move forward, trying to guide the council and figure out what's best for all of our residents. So, I'll go through some of the first parts of this real quick, because a lot of it's just background information. And these slides will be put online after this presentation, so you can look at them in more detail in your free time. You know, as the mayor mentioned, the commission was formed back in 2020. We started meeting early 2021. It was all virtual initially, because of the COVID lockdowns. We've started doing in-person meetings since then, every second Tuesday of the month, in the Southfield Pavilion, Conference Room A. So, if you'd ever like to come share your opinions with us at our public meetings, by all means, please come to the meetings, or every second Tuesday, they're open to everyone. What we've been trying to do, and what the council charges was doing, is to build kind of a wildlife program in Southfield. And the initial focus has been on deer, but we're looking at a lot of different things. We're trying to work with residents in other communities. We're trying to work with the different agencies we have within the city here. And then we're also trying to work with some of the state and county entities as well, to take the best approach we can. We've had a couple principles that have guided us. You know, we're looking at sustainability, citizens' education, and community involvement. The initial small survey we did, did show that a lot of people were interested in more educational programs, and just more information about what they can do to make their life more harmonious with the wildlife we have in the city. So, so far, what we've been doing is meeting monthly. We review the annual aerial survey that goes out. We've talked with the city council and various members of the community, anyone that's willing to talk with us, really. We did do an online survey, but as the mayor mentioned, we only had about 250, maybe a little bit less, people respond to some of the questions. We didn't feel like that was enough data to really make any kind of recommendations, because it was such a small percentage of the city residents.
How much of a size was that?
I'm sorry. So, it was, it was a survey that was available to everyone. So, basically, anyone that wanted to fill it out could. So, it wasn't like a controlled closed survey or anything like that, but it's less than 1%, 250. So, we did increase road signage during the mating season of deer, along some of the hotspots where car accidents were increased. And we also did propose a no-feed ordinance in Southfield, that really just brings our local ordinances in line with what's already out there for DNR regulations, because you're not supposed to be feeding deer down in the lower peninsula anyways. And we proposed putting the ballot question on the ballot for November as a way to get more input from residents, because we weren't getting a lot of people coming to our meetings. And we don't really have a lot of other ways of directly communicating with the residents other than town halls like this, and people that come to the meetings. Now, some of the challenges we've identified, you know, habitat degradation is a big issue. Dr. Jaclyn Corto, who's going to speak later tonight, did a study for the city several years ago, and noted that many of our parks and natural areas have been browsed by the deer to such a degree, that a lot of the native vegetation that we want to promote in the parks aren't growing back. And it's a lot of just invasive weeds that are coming in. There's a lot of citizen concerns, you know? Some residents have experienced a lot of damage to their landscaping. There's people that have been in car accidents. There's people that don't care as much. There's people that are cared about, carry about disease, pests, or even safety concerns associated with if we did reduce the herd. So, a lot of concerns from the residents. And then there's always the fiscal concerns. You know, if the city does anything, that costs money. It's going to come out of the general budget, because there's not really much in the way of grant money out there for these type of things. But if the city does nothing, that really puts the cost of overpopulation onto individual residents, too, some of which really can't afford to do a lot of the things that would help them manage their property with the deer. So, this slide, I do want to spend a little bit of time on. This is, this is one slide I want to spend a bit of time on with you. This is some of the data we have from the aerial survey. So, we've noticed a few things. The deer population here in Southfield tends to clump around some of the green spaces we have, and the waterways, like the Rouge River, as well as popular food sources, which oftentimes are our parks and people's yards. There's been aerial surveys done since 2017, 2018, in conjunction with Farmington Hills. Costs the city about $3,000 to $5,000 during the year to do the survey. That's our share of the cost. Farmington Hills covers the rest. So, the last year's survey, 2020, or earlier this year, February 2022, we had great conditions for monitoring, lots of snow. The surveyors counted 273 deer that were observed within Southfield city limits itself, but if you go just a mile north, up to 14 mile, the total count was 447 deer. So, there was 150 extra animals, just in that one mile stretch along the north end of the city. You know, total population we counted was 447 that we observed. And that was including the area just north up to 14 mile, which goes a little north of the city. Year before that, 2021, they spotted 869 deer within the same area. We don't know why the numbers were so much higher that year. It was a mild winter the year before, and we also had the COVID lockdown, so there was less people on the road. It could have been that there was just less car accidents and things like that. But that was a little bit of an outlier. 2020, we didn't do a survey. 2019, there was 279 deer observed within the city. In 2018, 248. But if you look just next door, in Farmington Hills, their numbers have been growing a bit more rapidly than ours. 2018, they had 379. 2019, 447. And then, now in 2022, they had 520. So, deer don't respect municipal boundaries. Farmington Hills is our neighbor. We see a lot of deer that cross over. They, in fact, tend to clump in that part of the city. So, I just wanted to show you these maps. These are distribution maps that were put together from the survey. The one to your left is from this year, and the one to your right is from the year before, 2021. So, 2020, 21, 2021 was the year we had the big spike, over 800 observed. 2022, we had more like 447. A lot of them were up in the north end. But one thing you can see from this map is that they are congregating in certain parts of the city. You know, the western half of Southfield, west of Telegraph Road, up to Inkster, has a lot more deer in it than everything east of Telegraph Road, but we are seeing them cross over a bit more. The northeast side, northeast side of the city, it's a lot more densely populated, a lot more dense with the housing. There's less deer up there. So, they really do tend to congregate around some of the golf courses, a lot of our parks, and the waterways, and then some of the neighborhoods that have just the really large lots. Another way to look at it, this is the same distribution map from 2022, but it's just showing the number of animals per square mile. On one, on the left side, you have Farmington Hills. On the right side, you have Southfield. And you'll see the same pattern that right along the midline, which is Inkster Road, there's a lot higher concentration in Southfield in that part of the city. So, there are some areas of the city where they were seeing as many as 30 to 45 deer per square mile, which is a lot of animals, and other areas of the city where they didn't see any. So, it's definitely not like we are completely overrun with deer here in the city, but there are parts of the city where there is a lot of them, and they hang out there and bed down and breed there. Just a little bit more data about the resources the city's been using, and some of the car accident data we were able to pull. So, our Department of Public Works has been spending, on average, about $25,000 a year just picking up dead animals. That's including labor costs and disposal costs, but that's, you know, animals that are most likely roadkill. It's about what it costs. It ends up being about $164.87 an hour in labor costs for the employees to go out there, and then we got to pay to dispose of them as well. So, it does cost the city money when the animals die, and we have to figure out what to do with them. We also have tried to track down some of the car accident data. We don't have a lot of city-specific data from SimCog or the Road Commission, but I was able to pull some from online that suggested we've been having between 50 and 65, 67 car accidents a year that are getting reported that involve deer. It's a very good chance that's an undercount, because a lot of people don't report something that doesn't damage their car when they don't have to file an insurance claim. But that's a decent number of car accidents. Hopefully, nobody's been injured in those. I don't know. I don't have that information, but nobody likes hitting an animal. And then this map is just to show you kind of the distribution of where our Public Works Department has been picking up animals that are found along the side of the road. Again, it matches up with a lot of those hotspots you saw in the prior map. So, there's a lot in the western part of the city, and then also along Telegraph Road, and then some parts down in the southern part of the city. And if you look at these maps in later days, too, you'll notice that the, some of the numbers spike around the rutting season, which tends to be early fall. That's when the deer are mating. A lot of the males and the females tend to be a lot more active, and we see a lot more car accidents and a lot more pickups during that time period. So, that brings me to why we're here today. We've got a proposed ballot question. It's an advisory question. It does not require the city to do anything. It doesn't commit the city to do anything, but we want your input on this. So, what we're asking is whether people would support reducing the deer herd, using humane lethal means, and working with local partners to ensure that any meat that is harvested from that gets donated to local food banks. There's actually a great nonprofit in the state called Hunter, or Sportsman or Hunters Against Hunger. They help cover the processing fees and ensure that any venison that's harvested gets out to people that are in need, either at food banks or other facilities throughout the state. So, that's why we're here today, is to just give everyone the information they need to make an informed decision in November. We've got a couple expert panelists that are going to come talk to you. First is going to be Chad Stewart. He works with the DNR. He's a deer, elk, and moose management specialist. He's been doing this for about 25 years, not all of it here in Michigan. But he's worked throughout Michigan. He's worked in Illinois. He also spent some time working overseas, and he's worked for the Smithsonian Conservation Biology Institute. Very knowledgeable about deer management and the options that are available. We also are going to have Dr. Jaclyn Corto, who is the, is a PhD ecologist. She's the same person that did the study on the city parks years ago, and she's also worked with other communities in the area, including Ann Arbor, on some of their deer management programs. She's going to talk more about some of the ecological impacts of deer on the native environment here in Michigan, and locally here in our parks, and some of the work that she did previously with her studies. So, after that, we'll have a little bit of time for question and answers. And then I would just encourage all of you to fill out the surveys that were available upfront. That helps us get a little bit of anonymous demographic information about who's attending. And then there's also a QR code for a county survey that a lot of the southeastern Michigan counties are using to gather data and try and come up with some more regional solutions to these type of problems. So, with that, I'll turn things over to Chad and let him move on with this.
Good evening, everyone. I appreciate the invite and the opportunity to speak. Just to reiterate, my name is Chad Stewart. I'm a deer biologist. It's a lot shorter than what David said, but it's a lot easier. With the Michigan Department of Natural Resources, I have served in this position for about eight years, but I've been doing deer work in different locations for much longer. I wanted to talk really today about just urban deer management in general, some of the biology. What I think is important is sort of the process involved with some of the decisions, and then some of the options that, that may be available to this community, any community, as they sort of struggle with these challenges. I will sort of put the caveat out that I've got about 20 minutes to speak, and I've tried to distill two different presentations that could easily go for 30 minutes to 60 minutes each on this topic. So, there's going to be a lot of context probably missing in the original presentation, but hopefully, we can dive a little bit deeper as we answer some of the questions that, that everyone has filled out. So, Mayor Seiver stole a little bit of my thunder with the biology talk here, but I'm going to talk a little bit about some of the, the data that we know about deer biology, especially as it pertains to urban settings. And one thing that we know about deer in an urban setting versus more of a rural setting is that we tend to see much higher survival rates associated with deer in these locations compared to rural settings. So, I've seen reports easily as high as 87% in some urban communities. So, once deer really get through their first year, their survival rates tend to be very high annually in these types of communities. The other piece that I, I want to talk about, and you've heard about this, is the reproductivity of whitetail deer. It tends to be a little bit higher in urban areas, because, quite frankly, there tends to be a lot more lush vegetation that contributes to their increased fitness levels, that they can sort of devote towards raising their fawns. So, on average, I've seen reported as high as 1.8 average fawns per adult doe. Obviously, if you live in this community, you've probably easily seen does with three fawns running around at some point. I see a lot of heads nodding. Not uncommon to see that. So, that 1.8 probably doesn't shock most people. Again, there's no reproductive senescence in whitetail deer, so there's no menopause. So, if a doe can live to be seven, eight, 10, 12, 15 years old, she will produce fawns every year of her life, at least one, probably two, maybe as many as three. So, you think about the contribution of one individual animal to the population over the life of their, over their lifespan. It can be quite dramatic. The other thing I don't have a bullet point for, but it's really interesting, is the fawns that you see in late May, early June, you know, the cute little cuddly things that are spotted and piled up next to your egress windows, or stairs, or wherever, typically about 25, maybe even up to 40% of them can breed in their first year. So, once they get to about 80 pounds, in December, they can become reproductively active and breed. So, the next year, when fawns are being born, they are also giving birth as well. So, they start early, they continue for a long time, and they live a long time. What typically happens then is you see a lot of deer in your, in your community. And we also see home range sizes a little bit smaller in urban settings than we do in rural settings. So, for those of you who don't know, home range is just basically the area that they occupy, either seasonally or annually. It can be defined differently. So, what, what you're going to see is those deer that live in your neighborhood, your part of the neighborhood, your community, a lot more frequently, because they don't have to wander nearly as far to, to meet their, their survival needs, you know, food, water, shelter, anything. They can get it in a much smaller area. To demonstrate sort of population growth, I want to talk about this location called the George Reserve. Now, this is actually in Michigan. It's owned by the University of Michigan. Now, it's a research facility. It's about two square miles. And some of the most groundbreaking research in deer population dynamics occurred in this facility back in the early 1920s. So, in 1928, six deer were introduced into this study research facility, and it was, they were measured, their population growth. Does anybody have a guess in what that population looked like by 1935? 222 were counted. So, in six years, seven years, you're seeing a growth rate from six animals to 222. Now, the fascinating thing about this project was that it was completely redone in 1975. So, the, all these deer, obviously, were gone. They were, they put in 10 deer in 1975, and in 1981, they had 212 deer. Almost exactly identical population trajectory growths in that same facility, 50 years apart. So, fantastic research coming out of Michigan. One of the big changes that we see with deer management and challenges is some of the changes that we see on the landscape. This is an aerial photo in 1999 of a place I used to work, just north of Indianapolis in Indiana. And you can see it's very rural. You see a lot of agriculture. That's 69, sort of cutting through the northwest corner of that image. Fast forward ahead 10 years, and what you see is a lot of development. So, what you're seeing from a deer's perspective is an area that's very rural, probably hunted by several different large landowners. Now, you've really eliminated hunting or any type of management, because you have some of these really densely packed communities, but it's still really good habitat for whitetail deer to live in. So, you've kind of protected them, and you've created the habitat and maintained really good, healthy habitat for them to thrive in. And that's, that's just what's happening right now, as, as our populations grow. I'm going to talk briefly about caring capacity, and these are two definitions that, you know, you'll, you'll probably hear about as you learn more about deer biology. One is biological caring capacity, and simply defined is that is the highest number of deer that an area can support. And, you know, to put it succinctly, you do not want to manage deer at biological caring capacity. Typically, deer at biological caring capacity have totally degraded their habitat. Yes, they can survive, but they're not very healthy looking. They're, they're thin. Their fawn production really drives down, so they're, they're hungry a lot. It's not where you want to be, even though the habitat can support that. So, keep that in mind. And then you've got social caring capacity. Social caring capacity is very difficult to measure. It's basically the tolerance that a community has in sort of tipping the scales from what an animal would be considered as, as a valued resource to maybe a nuisance. And obviously, we don't want to see deer viewed as a nuisance either. That's not our goal. The problem is that there's all types of acceptance or social caring capacities within a community. There are certain individuals that have a much lower threshold in their ability to tolerate whitetail deer, while there's others that have a much higher ability to tolerate it. And this can vary based on individual values. It could vary based on where you live in your community, because chances are, deer are not spread evenly across your community. So, there's a lot of factors that go into this. Typically, though, the biological caring capacity is generally higher than your social caring capacity. So, what that means is, people tend to get frustrated with the amount of deer that they have before the deer population itself will curb itself and, and start to dip back down. And then when you get into what nat, you know, sort of a natural cycle of, of deer population looks like, it's going to sort of ebb and flow. It'll increase dramatically when populations are low, because we saw how deer reproduce. They grow very quickly, and once they approach caring capacity, or even exceed caring capacity, their populations will crash. So, this is not really how we like to manage wildlife. We like to kind of keep them healthy and at fairly stable levels, understanding that that stable level is in balance with the values and the, the habitat that's available to them. I'm going to switch gears a little bit and go away from biology, and just do a couple of slides from one of my colleagues. Her name's Dr. Emily Pomeran. She's a social scientist with the Michigan DNR. And she and some of her colleagues from where she used to work at Cornell University really developed this really cool community-based deer management and decision-making process. And we've tried to adopt this in our consultation with communities now, because it's such a great way to think about how you're managing deer. So, again, this is very much distilled down to a much broader presentation, but this is the general concepts as you go through community decisions, especially as it pertains to deer management. You really want to identify what the problem is. And typically, the problem is, is not we have too many deer. The problem is, what is the impact of the deer we have in our community? And that can be a host of different things, but, you know, I, I try to push people away from the exact number and emphasize the impact in the community. Because if you have a community that values, say, one very special orchid that is unique to your area, and it's growing in your forest preserves, and you have one deer that loves to eat that orchid, then you have too many deer in your community. So, it's thinking about the impacts of the deer population rather than the number. And that's a really important concept to understand. Once you understand the values and the impacts that the deer are having in your community, then you can move ahead to the decision-making process, the implementation of that decision-making process, and ultimately, you want to evaluate and adapt that program to make sure that your, your management program your, your management program is, in fact, hitting the mark in what you want to accomplish. So, she has this sort of slide here. So, you know, do we have a problem? Well, that's the first thing to really understand, is understanding what the community believes in, and understanding is, do we have a problem? And that's going to vary depending on where you're at and who you're asking, but a broader understanding and a broader survey, and Southfield should be commended for trying to get this information out and trying to understand the, the values and the desires of their community. This is an important step to take in, in determining what decisions are made in the future. You can see, like, so what problems are occurring, where it's happening, when it's occurring, you know, throughout the year, who it's occurring to, maybe certain districts or communities are more impacted than others, and then obviously, the severity. You know, are we talking about landscape damage? Are we talking about human health risks with deer collisions on the road? You know, that, there are different, different conversations to be had with different impacts that we're, we're seeing. And then, how are you going to gather the information that you're needing? So the first piece is the questionnaire of the residents. Very important first step, and again, commend Southfield for trying to take that step right now. And then you can start looking at some other things. You know, are we tracking tick-borne diseases in our community? Are we looking at deer vehicle collisions? Are we looking, or is there a way to track damage complaints, whether it's residential or agriculture, agricultural? You know, are, is our community experiencing deer browse damage in, in our, in our valued forest preserves and, and our, in our parks? Again, work that's being done in this community and elsewhere, and, and this is really important information to help make decisions in the future. So I'm going to talk about management options. These are things that are available to communities to consider, and maybe what is not available to consider. I'll be honest with you, if there was a management option that was cheap, favored by everybody, and, gosh, what else am I missing? Those are the two big ones, right? We wouldn't be here, and we wouldn't be having this discussion, because everybody would be adopting it. Every community would be adopting it. These are really difficult decisions to make at the community level, and that's why collecting a lot of this data is very important. So the first thing a community can do is just simply nothing. And so, is this a pro? Well, it seems like a compromise between the, the people that don't want to do anything and the people that do want to do anything. It's obviously inexpensive in the, in sort of the long term, but, you know, the cons, there's definitely going to be a view that this is an inaction by our elected or appointed officials. And then you're, if you're seeing any sort of impact or degradation of habitat, chances are that's going to continue. So that picture there is a browse line in Indiana in the nineteen eighties. And if you can see where the leaves come down on those trees, that corresponds perfectly to the top part where a deer's mouth can reach. So, and if you were to go into that forest, the only thing you would see in the woods below that level are probably several invasive species that are just completely not palatable. So, very much impactful. Hunting is one of the, the things that, you know, our agency tends to promote, support. This is very easily implemented in a rural setting, can be a little bit more trickier in an urban setting. Not to say it can't be done, but some communities are better set up for it than others. We certainly have worked with communities that have incorporated archery hunts. They find it very effective, very useful, very safe. It's inexpensive. I can promise you, if, if there are any hunters in this room, they would be happy to go out and hunt deer in this community safely, responsibly, and without cost to the community. I can promise you that. Can, can, they can also provide an economic stimulus. So not only will, a lot of times, hunters do this for free, they might actually pay to be in this program as well. Or you can require them to donate the first deer, the second deer that they harvest to like the Sportsman Against Hunger, the food banks, and that, that food is distributed within the community. Again, providing an incentive. Hunting is generally supported by many people. It's generally very favorable. Might change a little bit if you are walking down a park trail and you see someone actively hunting. That might elicit a different emotion when it's in your backyard. Some types of hunting is not appealing to individuals, so if it's trophy hunting, so again, if you're putting things in here and you're just having hunters go out to shoot big trophy bucks, it's not going to do anything for your population management, and it's, 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 a lot of people view that as very distasteful. There can be local concerns, like I, like I, like I previously mentioned, and then there are also access issues as well. Obviously, in an urban community, it's very rare that you have very large parcels where hunters can hunt and retrieve game, and obviously, there's a trespassing concern that sometimes can come into play when you have very small parcels that are each individually privately-owned. Sharp shooting is a method that we're bringing in a trained individual to remove deer typically outside of the hunting season in wintertime. It's meant for efficiency. It is very effective at reducing your deer population very quickly. It is safe, and I know that might make a few folks in this audience cringe a little bit, but we, we work with several different individuals and groups. We have never had a bad experience in a community with these individuals, provided they are properly trained and equipped. The cons, it is very expensive. You're looking at easily probably several hundreds of dollars a deer for the removal of these animals, and obviously, it can be controversial. One of the management options that's typically brought up is either trap and relocate, or trap and removal. I can tell you from the DNR standpoint, we will not authorize relocation of animals from one community to another. There are disease concerns. Additionally, there are plenty of research studies that show that animals that are relocated into new locations tend to have very low survival rates, and obviously, that's generally probably preceded with a lot of stress involved with that individual as, as they're identifying a new landscape, so. But it can be effective, especially if there are what we call projectile ordinances in your community that prohibit the discharge of either a firearm or even a bow. So you can get around that. It does, so it does remove deer from those very difficult-to-reach areas. The cons, there is a lot of stress involved, as you can imagine, with trapping a deer. It, again, very expensive to, to complete. You just can't look in the Yellow Pages. I say Yellow Pages, I'm dating myself. I don't think that's a thing, but, but you can't, you can't just sort of Google, like, someone in your community that traps deer. Like, these people just don't exist. There are very few people that have this level of expertise. And then, like I said, relocation is not allowed in Michigan. One piece that is often brought up on the non-lethal side of things is something called contraception. So contraception is something that essentially prevents deer from having fawns in the future. So you're not firing a lethal projectile. Obviously, this is going to be, again, very expensive. It's, you're not removing the deer that are causing the problem, so this goes back to the original, you know, identifying the problem. If you have too many deer, and what are their impacts now? Identifying what those impacts will be, even if there are no fawns in the population. I'll, I'll be honest with you, a lot of the research that's out there has shown that it is very difficult, if not impossible, to achieve results from a contraceptive drug in a free-ranging deer herd. There's, you'll see maybe some examples of success in islands. You'll maybe see some examples of success in fenced or pen facilities. In a free-ranging facility, you do not see the same level of success. Additionally, I'm going to go through this very quick, because this is very jumbly, but there are two different approved contraceptive drugs on the market. One is called Ganacan. It is, it is a multi-year drug that is approved through the EPA, essentially as a pesticide. So that's one thing to consider. This is not approved through the Food and Drug Administration federally. It is approved by the EPA as a pesticide. It is not registered for use in the state of Michigan. So, in Michigan, you have to register the use of pesticides. This is not registered for use. Ganacan essentially prevents deer from coming into estrus. Estrus is the cycle where they begin their, their breeding cycle. So, if you were to hand capture and hand inject, so you have to capture all of these animals, hand inject them with this drug, and then release them, it prevents them from coming into estrus and basically keeps them in a non-reproductive state. Problem with Ganacan is now, next year, you have to apply a booster, so you have to catch those animals again and apply that contraceptive drug. So, think about the logistics behind that. Additionally, the other drug is called Zonostat. Very similar, although it can be now delivered with a remote dart. It still requires a booster, so you have to catch those animals again and boost them. This actually prevents implantation. So the animals in a reproductive state, they're engaging in breeding activities, but the, the sperm and the oocyte, the egg, are not compatible. So they do not get pregnant, but what happens for in a deer's world, twenty-eight days later, they become reproductive again. So what you're doing is that peak that you see in sort of late October, early November, with deer running around everywhere, chasing each other, you're drawing that timeline out longer, because these animals remain in a reproductive state, and they are not getting pregnant. So that'll continue into the wintertime. Again, this is registered as a pesticide and is not registered for use in the state of Michigan. The other piece that comes up is sterilization. Again, very similar to contraceptives, but this is a permanent change. So it does not require a booster like the contraceptives drugs do. It, you capture the deer, you do either a tubal ligation, or you remove their, their ovaries. You're looking at probably easily over a thousand dollars a deer for this to be done. Famously done in Ann Arbor just recently, in conjunction with some lethal management. That, that piece is often not included in the talking point. There are final reports out there for you to look at. I will say that, once this project became available in Ann Arbor, our legislature prohibited the use of sterilization of any game species through April first of this past year. So obviously, that has expired, but there was a very strong response to even the allowance of sterilization in Ann Arbor by elected officials in Lansing. Reintroducing predators. You might laugh, it does come up. I've got the pros and cons there. I will just tell you that we are not going to do that, because if you think this is a popular topic in Southfield with deer, I will not be the one talking about mountain lions or wolves in Southfield. Final thing is fencing and repellents. This can be very effective at sort of minimizing deer damage. Exclusion really is the best way to do it, so fencing your landscaping out, keeping deer away from that can be very helpful. It's relatively inexpensive, but again, you're not seeing a, a community-wide problem being solved here. There are no guarantees. I've got, I've got a, what's the, what's the big plant that gets the big flowers, the, not the hostas, hydrangea, thank you. I've got a hydrangea that's about this big where I live. It's like probably eight years old. Like, they just keep eating it. I, I fence it, they just kind of work through some of that stuff. And some places it works, some places it doesn't. I'm, I don't know, maybe I'm not good enough to keep my, my hydrangeas surviving, but, and it obviously requires maintenance, so, especially the maintenance part with repellents. Some repellents can be very effective, but sometimes, wow, if you miss a day out of a week or a week and a half period, they're gone. They're gone. So, there are pieces to this that it's not foolproof. You know, so, and there are other pieces as well. There's planning sort of what I would call non-palatable, you know, plants are trying to guide it in that way. Problem is, the more deer that you have, the more palatability those animals seem to have. So, I kind of liken it to like, I hate like Brussels sprouts, but like, if I'm really hungry, I will eat a Brussels sprout. And deer are kind of the same way. Like, they might not go after this particular plant, but if it starts to start thinning down a little bit, they'll start nipping at it a little bit. So, I've probably taken up too much of your time already. I do have contact information there. I'll be around and certainly answering questions, but I'm going to try to turn this over to someone else, so Dr. Kortoe can give her a presentation.
Thank you so much. I want to thank all of you for the opportunity to, to talk about the deer monitoring research that I did for the city of Southfield, and especially Michelle and David for inviting me to this forum. I wish that I could be there in person, but I regret to say that I have COVID and I'm still in isolation with symptoms, so I appreciate your patience with my hoarse voice. I'm, like Mr. Stewart, I tried to pack a lot into this talk, so I will apologize if I go on a long time. I'm, I work with trees, and I tend to see the trees rather than the forests, so I kind of will give you lots and lots of detail, but I'll try to cut to the chase at a few key points, and also, please feel free to cut me off if I go on too long. And I just did want to say briefly, as part of my background, I have been working on looking at deer impacts in Michigan for, for about twenty-five years, including my, my PhD research was at the George Reserve, which Mr. Stewart mentioned. So I, I have worked in areas with very high deer populations, and, and in more than thirty or to forty sites throughout southeast Michigan. In this talk, I will consider how plant, how deer affect plants and communities, starting with the conceptual background, outlining some major findings in the research literature that I've accumulated over the past thirty to fifty years, and then looking at the findings from the studies I did in Southfield, and the implications of those findings. I'll then just briefly look at deer compared to other threats to our natural areas, and, return to that list of management options that Mr. Stewart showed, but from a slightly different lens. Let's start with some background about deer, how deer affect plants and communities. Perhaps the best-known and most frequently observed impact is deer damage on plants from browsing. Deer are generalist browsers that can remove damage or remove whole-plant parts, whole-plants, flowers, or fruits, so those are known as consumptive effects. These so-called consumptive effects may be most familiar, but deer can also damage plants in other ways, including trampling, repeated bedding, and antler rubs, shown in the upper-left, sorry, upper-right there with my dog as a scaler. Antler rubs can seriously injure or kill tree saplings and thin-barked shrubs, and I've documented extensive dieback immortality on shrubs, including rich hazel and bladder nut in the Southfield parks.
Yeah, Colleen, just to let you know, we are not seeing your screen share at the moment.
Oh, deer, okay. Thank you. I'm so sorry, I thought I had turned that on, but I guess it was no longer on.
There we go.
Okay, whoops, I'll just flip through these. Here we go. This is what I was showing about the different deer impacts. So, deer damage to individual plants. Many plants can tolerate moderate or occasional browsing, and in some species, browsing can even encourage a spout of regrowth. However, repeated or heavy browsing can have serious effects. In some cases, deer can kill the plants outright when they uproot or break off the plants during browsing, or when repeated browsing removes all buds or growing parts. More often, though, browsing can contribute to plant death in a delayed and indirect way, often making plants more susceptible to drought, disease, and insects. Furthermore, browsing reduces growth, or can even lead to apparently negative growth, where plants shrink over time. So often, as in the photo shown here, browse on woody tree saplings can prevent saplings from escaping the so-called deer molar zone. That is, the half-meter to one-and-a-half meters, or sort of roughly one-and-a-half to five-and-a-half feet, which is typically considered where deer browse, although in areas with heavy deer populations, they'll browse almost down to the ground, and then up to six feet or seven feet. I've seen deer standing on their hind legs in the metro parks, in some of the metro parks browsing. So that reduced growth can lead to declines in forest regeneration. And then a third major effect is that reproduction can be reduced or prevented. So flower, deer that browse plants heavily may browse off flowers or fruit, or prevent the production of flowers and fruit. And that means that over time, reproduction- And that means that over time, reproduction can be decreased or even prevented. Those impacts on individuals can lead to impacts on populations and species. For example, spring flora species such as Trillium and True and Fall Solomon Seal need to grow for several years. In the case of Trillium, for seven to 15 years before they gain enough resources in their short spring growing seasons to be able to flower for even the very first time. Deer can further delay that flowering, or since deer appear more likely to browse plants with buds or flowers, deer may lead to reductions in the total flowering of a population by removing many of the flowers. Even for the flowers that remain, the lower number of flowers can be linked to lower fruit set because pollinators might not find those low-density patches of flowers. Again, while an occasional season of reduced reproduction by a few individuals can be overcome, when whole populations of plants are affected for multiple years, populations can decline and disappear from localized sites. With enough local decline, species ranges may decline over time. While so far I've been talking about individual plants, populations, and species, ecological studies have addressed deer impacts at the level of communities, which include multiple species and their interactions, such as food webs. Deer can affect many other species through their impacts on plants. For example, deer browsing can limit the flowers needed to support pollinators, reduce the fruit that songbirds and small mammals eat, reduce the leaves and fruit for insects that then birds eat, and so on. And in addition, larger deer, large deer populations can even affect the way nutrients and water cycle through ecosystems. And here again, I'm realizing that the control bar might be blocking your view, but hopefully you can see that here are some species that do rely on the plants that deer eats. And so, when you have reductions in flowers, such as wild geranium, that can affect pollinators, and those pollinators are in turn feed food for some of our bird species. These non-consumptive or indirect effects are harder to assess. And again, let me just tell you, these non-consumptive effects, let me define, are things like soil compaction and trampling, which reduces the vegetation, which affects the microclimate. So, when the soil is more barren, more compacted, the local temperatures can be higher and those plants can be more susceptible to drought. So, first, they're susceptible to drought. And then if the deer browse, then they have even fewer resources. And so on, that disturbed soil can be a seed site for weeds. It can be more erodible. Deer can disperse seeds, but often those are weedy species that benefit or invasive species, and so on. And I just want to emphasize that it's not just my work, but literally hundreds and hundreds of studies over the past 50 years have documented numerous deer impacts on forest plants, including declining tree regeneration, decreased native shrub and wildflower diversity, abundance in flowering and reproduction, and declines of sensitive species, including orchids, trillions, or others. And I'm sorry if you can't see it clearly, whoops, can't see it clearly on my screen here, but a whole volume of the Wildlife Society Bulletin in 1997 was dedicated to the topic of deer overabundance. And there was a volume published in 2003 also looking at overabundant deer. And I just want to also finally make this point that, again, a tree, a forest is more than just trees. So, when we're talking about deer impacts in forests, it's not just the trees that are affecting. 85% of all the species in the forests are the wildflowers and shrubs, other than the trees. So, deer can have wide-ranging impacts. And then I've talked about deer effects on forest food webs. So, having given you that overview, I want to go into my findings in Southfield and talk about how deer are affecting trees, wildflowers, and a couple of rare species in Southfield. I'm not going to spend a lot of time talking about methods, but I just wanted to, because I want to focus on results. But I just wanted to point out that I used several different well-established study methods to look at how deer are affecting woody plants and wildflowers. And I'm happy to talk about these more at the end if there are specific questions. These methods rely on assessing whether woody plants have been browsed by deer. So, let's look for a minute at how we know that it's deer browse. Deer lack upper incisors. So, a deer browse twig is not cleanly angled and generally has a shredded appearance shown on the right. In contrast to the clean angled cut left by the incisors of a rabbit or a woodchuck shown on the, on the, sorry, on the left. I think I said that wrong. Shown the rabbit and woodchuck are on the left, the deer is on the right. Voles and mice generally chew on stems much closer to the ground and leave a toothy nod mark, whereas squirrels and chipmunks look like someone took an immersion blender to the twig. I wish we could actually be out in the field so that I could show this to you in person. It can be a bit tricky to identify these characteristic marks on tender new growth, but older twigs will generally hold the scars reliably for two to three seasons. And here, just to show you, are some photos from one of my studies in Ann Arbor. The deer browse shown on the left. It has that shreddy edge, whereas the rabbit is an angled edge. So, let's move to results for Southfield. Just to orient you here, this is the initial preliminary study I did for Southfield in 2017. And I worked in five different sites. Carpenter Lake, Baurvik Woods, Valley Woods, Lincoln Woods, and Berberian Woods. Sometimes I will abbreviate those in the slides by just the one word. All of these sites had a lot of deer browse damage. And I pretty much went out and either set up plots or walked along lines and found every woody species I could growing in that browse zone of six inches to six feet and assessed all of them. The highest rates of browse were at Berberian Woods and Baurvik. Berberian Woods is, of course, right there along the River Rouge. And as Mr. Stewart pointed, or sorry, as Mr. Schaefer pointed out, the deers do definitely seem to be hanging out there along the river. Valley Woods also had high levels of deer browse, but I was only able to, I focused there on just a particular shrub, so that's not quite as comparable. And even Lincoln Woods, which had the lowest levels of deer browse, still had over half of all the shrubs and trees being browsed by deer. Looked at in a slightly different way. Unless a deer uproots the whole plant when it's eating, plants can recover from that single episode of browse, but multiple episodes are harder to recover from. So, the amount of browse damage or the browse intensity is important. Other studies have found that when more than 50% of a tree's twigs or buds are browsed, that plant is much more likely to die. And so, when I went out and measured, I counted how many branches that each individual had been browsed. The red bar here shows browse levels of 50% or more of the branches on any individual. And then what proportion of all the stems that I found had that 50% or more level? The yellow is browsed, but less than 50%, and green is un-browsed. So, here again, you can see that the browse intensity is highest at Berberian Woods and Baurvik. And again, lower at Lincoln, a little bit, and lower at Carpenter as well, although still a lot of plants being browsed. Rolling down into a little bit more detail, and just as an example, because I'm not going to go through all the parks this way, but just what makes up those plants that I was finding? Well, in the case of Baurvik, where I assessed 175 stems, there were nine species of native trees, six species of native shrubs, and four species of invasive shrubs. And this shows the number of stems. Again, the red is the stems that had 50% or more of all their buds or twigs browsed. You can see that a majority of native trees and native shrubs had deer browse damage. Invasive shrubs were found in lower numbers in this part of the park. I assessed the mature forest on the western side of the park. But where they were found, a lower proportion was browsed and the browse intensity was lower. The parks varied considerably in their plant communities due to differences in the natural environment as well as the land use history. So, to compare across parks, I wanted to find a species that occurred in all sites, and that was actually challenging. The most abundant species found across sites was ash of several species, actually mostly white and green, but a few black, which I lumped together for this analysis. You can see that the ash trees were very heavily browsed across all sites. They were most abundant and least browsed at Carpenter Lake. However, because Emerald Ash Bor continues to be resident in our forests, even if this species manages to escape deer browse, it is not likely to contribute to the regenerating forests of our future in Michigan. And then finally, to keep looking at these implications of browse intensity and plant growth, this is still focused on the ash seedlings. On the left, the average percent of branches browsed, and on the right, the plant height. So, you can see that the taller the orange bars are, the browse damage on the left, the shorter the average plant height. So, Carpenter Lake, which had the lowest browse intensity, had the tallest plant height. But this is just further evidence that deer browsing is affecting these tree seedlings in ways that can lead to their future success. I want to take a minute to look at oaks because oaks are a dominant or common species in all of these different sites, although different oak species prevailed. And oaks are very important in our forests because they provide for food for over 400 species of insects, which in turn feed birds and other animals. It turned out that oak seedlings of any species were rare. And the only oak seedlings that I was able to locate that were not heavily browsed were first- or second-year seedlings that were still quite short, less than eight inches, and may not yet have been found by deer. So, in the three parks I'm showing here, I assessed more than 742 square meters of area, which is about 8,000 square feet or nearly two-tenths of an acre total in the plots across here. And I found a total of just 19 oak seedlings, which is a very low number for an area that has mature acorn-producing oaks. So, that low number suggests that the deer and other animals are eating acorns even before they can sprout, and then that many seedlings are being killed or removed by deer browsing. So, let me turn next to the experimental plantings that I did of red oak seedlings. And here again, is the set of parks that I worked at. I planted experimental seedlings of Michigan-grown acorns across the parks and tracked them for a year to have a direct comparison of how browse compared across the sites. You can see that all of the sites had high rates of browsing, which is the orange, orange showing the deer browse seedlings. With, again, Berberian Woods had the highest browse rate, 91%. Let me just show this in a slightly different way. Other studies have suggested that browse rates of more than 15% shown by the dotted line here are unsustainably high, so that oak regeneration may not succeed with browse rates over that level. And all of the sites exceeded that level. Lincoln Woods and Valley Woods were both lower, but due to vandalism and flooding at those sites, I was not actually able to assess the seedlings for the full year. And so, that's actually probably an underestimate of the total amount of browse damage on those sites. Let me turn now to a few wildflower species, those other important forest residents. And I'll just tell you briefly about Trillium, False Solomon Seal or False Spike Nerd, Doll's Eyes, and the flowering shrub Bladder Nut. Trillium is a really useful species as an indicator, as many previous studies have suggested. So, height of Trillium can be an indicator. The decreases in height can indicate deer impacts. Flowering rates of less than 30% are suggested as an indicator that deer impacts are too high. And both observational and demographic graphic modeling studies have shown that browse rates of more than 10% to 15% of trilliums in a population lead to decline over time. I just want to make one more point about Trillium. It can be hard to notice deer damage if you just casually look at the ground. For example, just glancing at this plot, it's a square meter, which is roughly a square yard, suggests that there is a reasonable Trillium population, those three-leaved plants there. But you don't see any flowers. However, when you get down on your hands and knees and look closely, you can see that many stems have been browsed. Now, small mammals such as rabbits and chipmunks will browse herbaceous stems like this, but the characteristic marks are different. They'll typically get a leaf, or if they do the stem, there's more chewing and they pull it down. These showed the characteristic deer browse marks, and there were also deer tracks and deer scat in this plot. So, you have to spend a lot of time close to the ground to see what's going on. And you also have to go frequently during the growing season to capture this when it happens because the stems can wilt back fairly quickly. So, I'll just run through quickly my findings here. I did my best to find as many different plots to monitor as I could, but there just weren't a whole lot of Trillium that I could find. But in the upper graph with the orange bars, you see that observed browse rates. And again, it's hard to observe deer browse, so these are likely underestimates. But almost all of the plots did have observed browse rates higher than that 10% to 15%. That's sustainable by deer, or sorry, by Trillium. And again, Mr. Stewart talked about carrying capacity from the perspective of deer. But you know, the flip side of that is tolerance by any individual species. And so, this exceeds the Trillium tolerance for deer. There are these three plots that did not have deer browsing. Two of those, the Carpenter plots, where there was flowering shown below on the pink, were actually such steep hillsides I could barely stand and also had downed logs and fallen branches covering over these areas. So, they were, these two plots at Carpenter, as well as this one at Baurvik, seemed to be, to me, quite inaccessible to deer, although obviously the deer had succeeded in getting at this spot anyway, even though I almost didn't. Let me just move on to similar findings for False Spike Nerd. I don't have similar studies showing suggested browse tolerance rates or flowering rates, but given that the life histories of this plant are similar to Trillium, it's likely that the levels would be similar. Again, fairly high levels of browse. Deer browse observed more than 10% at every site and more than 15% at all but one, sorry, at plot, and very low levels of flowering. So, I see the plants, I just don't see them flowering. Just briefly, Doll's Eyes, I only found in one area in Berberian Woods. I had not seen this typically browsed in other sites where I've worked. And so I hadn't specifically focused on this in any plots in the spring. But I came back in the summer and found that thirty-one of thirty-seven stems were browsed by deer in only eleven fruits on all of those plants. So most of them, if they had any fruit left at all, it was just one or two. Whereas nearby, under a fallen log, I found three plants that had bloomed. And they, those three protected from deer had a total of sixty-six fruits. And I returned a little bit too late in two thousand nineteen to fully assess this, but all the plants that I did find were browsed. These data suggests that deer could become a problem for this species as high levels of deer browse on wildflower fruits could reduce the reproductive rate and lead to declines. Blatternut is a wildflower, but a shrub, a flowering shrub that's an important source for early emerging pollinators because it blooms relatively early in the growing season. So that's why I call it a beloved shrub. Many bee species use it. Blatternut abundance declined from two thousand eighteen to nineteen amidst continued heavy deer browsing. And furthermore, I didn't find a single one of those stems that would have been able to flower or fruit because they were so heavily browsed, every single bud was was stripped off. So even if the species itself is is able to persist, it's not able to offer resources to pollinators and the birds that rely on them. And then I'll conclude with a state threatened, and that is protected species, golden seal. Shown on the left, a deer doe watched me from less than twenty feet away as we sampled a golden seal population in two thousand eighteen. And the browsing increased considerably in that population in two thousand nineteen. Those distinctive two-pronged stems indicate that the reproductive parts of the flowers and or fruits were browsed along with the leaves. If a golden seal is not going to fruit or flower, it has only one stem and one leaf. So you can tell that these both would have had a flower or fruit. And here again, we sampled the two plots that we were able to locate of this threatened species in two thousand eighteen and nineteen. And deer browse increased and abundance decreased in both of these plots. Thus, the increased levels of deer browse may further threaten this already designated threatened species. So having told you a little bit about the data, let's just briefly think about the implications. Deer impacts on tree seedlings matter because reduce they reduce tree seedling survival and growth, and that can lead to reduced forest regeneration. Oak regeneration is a particular concern throughout the northeast US. Some scientists have referred to this as forest disintegration, a process by which our forests in some areas are gradually converting to grasslands dominated by ferns and sedges. And then impacts on forests can affect things like the ecosystem services offered by the forests, such as water quality, flood and erosion control, and of course, a concern in this age of global warming and climate change, the carbon sequestration function of forests. And again, deer browse on wildflowers matters because that reduced flowering and fruiting leads not only to reductions over time in those plant populations, but means that there are fewer resources for other species, including pollinators, sunbirds, and small mammals. And just to illustrate this, I did in Ann Arbor, I did some studies of pollinators in places where I had fenced and unfenced plots where I had planted in the same number of wild stems of different wildflower species, asterix and golden rods. And I, you can see the yellow is the fence plots where there were many flowers typically. And the orange is the unfenced plots that had many fewer flowers because the deer had free access and had been browsing. So this was an initial study in just five fences in one park. And then the following year, I repeated this in many more, on on many more occasions and five different sites or plots in five, each of five different parks. And very significant in three of the parks. You can see the unfenced had some pollinators, but but very low. And then two of the parks, I couldn't find pollinators in the unfenced plots at all. And then just a final note, that typical fall-blooming species such as asterix and golden rods that I find in many area parks, I simply couldn't find in the Southfield Parks during the times that I was working there. And they should have started to be visible. So it's possible that deer impacts have already been in the past, past browsing might have already led to some declines of these species. Finally, let's just think briefly about deer versus other stresses. We know there are lots of other stresses to our natural areas, including habitat destruction and fragmentation, invasive species, both insects and invasive shrubs, and also some diseases, global warming and climate change, and acid rain, and so on. But in, as is so often the case in ecosystems, ecosystems don't experience this as an either-or, but as a both-and. Deer tend to amplify the stresses, making plants less able to recover and reproduce. And especially if habitat destruction has already eliminated many seed sources. If deer eliminate more seed sources, there will be very few left. And then furthermore, there are just fewer resources for other species like pollinators that are also facing those stress stresses. So I tend to think of it as not just one thing, but many things with deer serving to amplify. And then finally, I just wanted to touch on the deer management options that Mr. Stewart so wonderfully outlined, but just really here, thinking about the perspective of how these options apply if we're thinking about our home landscapes versus our natural areas. Again, the first thing that we can do always is do nothing. So that means for our home landscapes, you know, deer populations would be controlled by vehicle crashes. And ultimately, when you reach that carrying capacity by starvation and disease. For natural areas, that means that we could continue to lose plants, species, and communities over time and could eventually convert to grasslands or novel ecosystems. Thinking about planting deer-resistant species, obviously, you can do that in your home landscape, but you you can't necessarily do that in a natural area, although a natural area may convert over time to those less palatable species. So grasses, sedges, and ferns will tend to dominate areas dominated by deer. But again, as Mr. Stewart said, deer preferences change, and hungry deer will have more things that they'll eat. And furthermore, there seems to be cultural learning and cultural differences depending on site. Things I see heavily browsed in some sites are barely touched in another site with a lot of deer, but a plant there that's heavily eaten might not be eaten in the first site. So there are a lot of variations. Deer repellents may be a good option for your home landscape, although, you know, varying effectiveness personally. No matter how often I have applied them in my garden and on some plants, native plants I'm trying to restore, I haven't succeeded in deterring the deer. But obviously, they're costly and impractical for large natural areas, given the need for frequent repeat treatments. Fencing, as Mr. Stewart said, is probably one of the best options for protecting your own home landscape and can be very effective. It's for a large natural area, it's kind of costly and maybe impractical because it needs continued maintenance. And and most people probably don't want to go into their parks and experience it as a barricaded fortress. You know, I I think people like having the parks feel a little more open. And then finally, fences can actually introduce some other indirect effects. And so thinking about deer management, ultimately, in some way, I think is necessary. So I'm just going to end there and just say I'd be happy to entertain questions later in this session. Happy also by email, I'm hoping that in a few days, I'll be a little more clear-thinking and will be better able to respond. So I'm going to end there, thank you. And just a quick thanks to Southfield staff and others.
Well, we've we've thrown a lot of information at you. If you if you want to see it, a very good example of everything that's been discussed, go to Carpenter Lake. And you can see that the understory has, a lot of it has disappeared, especially when you get past, get into the woods, past the rows of buckthorn that are in the beginning of the trail. And what's happening in Carpenter Lake is invasives are growing. This Japanese barberry bush in August, it turns bright yellow. But you want the forest to regenerate, and it's very, very clear to us what we've lost at Carpenter Lake. We set aside this forty-acre parcel for, as a nature preserve for wildlife, but also for humans to enjoy and for the nature preserve to regenerate itself. So when the when the seedlings disappear, it's not a, it's not a good thing. And then you also have the, when the bucks are rubbing their their velvet off. What do you call that, Chad? Grubbing, yeah. That, I know in my neighborhood, it is girdle trees, and they've died. So that, you know, that, these are all things that are obviously of concern to us. So we're at a point now where we were going to take questions. We asked that you write them down on a piece of paper. And then we'll, members of the commission will sort through them. And we will take out anything that's redundant, but we'll try to get to everybody's question. So our first question. What are other communities doing? Success stories only, this card writer. So Chad, this may be something for you. The only community that we've been in direct contact with is Farmington Hills, which has the very similar problems that we have. Any success stories?
Oh, I'm sorry.
In other communities.
What are other, okay. So the question is, what are other communities doing? Are there success stories? No, I I won't say no. I'm just trying to think. So there's a host of communities doing different things. A lot of communities have gone, I will say, the sharpshooting route. They dedicate a budget, and they do, they incorporate that every couple of years as part of their management process. Most people are probably fairly familiar with Ann Arbor. That was a very sort of unique approach that certainly nobody else has has copied. I think, I think we're still sort of understanding what the long-term impact of that is going to be. Also, a lot of communities aren't necessarily willing to put forward the money that Ann Arbor invested in their, in their deer management program. Actually, a community that I'm a part of, just outside of Lansing, seems to really like how they've handled their deer situation. And I will admit, and and there might be a little bias here on my end, but I think that they've had a lot of success in what they've done too. So they have actually incorporated what I will call a managed archery hunt. So they have They have incorporated for about ten years or or more now. In their parks, they've authorized hunters that are going through a proficiency test, go in, they remove deer. Usually, they remove a little bit over a hundred deer per year. Have been seeing improvements for a while, and then it started to kind of go backwards again. So they've continued the archery program, but then they've supplemented it with what I will call a sharpshooting or out-of-season removal. And they actually use their police force to do that out of sea, or out of season. They get permits from us, remove probably an additional two hundred deer or so. So they are taking about three hundred deer out of their community every year. They give archers the first crack and try to get as many as they can, and then they fill in with their police force to remove it. They have been seeing some very positive results. It's absolutely been positively received also within the community. So there is at least one example that, a community that's been going through this for about ten years to at least talk to.
So next question, a member asks, what about harvesting the meat when a deer is killed in a deer car accident?
Yeah, so that we do have salvage permits available. That is an option for individuals to to do. You know, again, sort of shifting the conversation from that to management, you know, nobody wants to manage their deer herd with cars. So that's, while that's, while that's something that's available to individuals, there's certainly a timeframe there where you might be able to salvage that that meat. You know, from a management standpoint, I don't know of any communities that are interested in sort of, you know, at least managing deer with cars. But you know, there is an option to salvage venison or meat from individual collisions.
Then how many hours? Yeah, I mean, the rap starts. So someone has asked, what are, are there concerns with chronic wasting disease?
Gosh, there are, I think there's always concerns with chronic wasting disease. We've not identified it in Oakland County, so that's, that's good. Chronic wasting disease, for those of you who don't know, it's a disease that right now has been, it's a servant-specific disease. It's a always fatal disease, so once an animal contracts it, they will die from it if something doesn't kill them first. Additionally, the infectious agent, which is a prion, which is a little bit different than a virus or a bacteria, which are living organisms, are shed into the environment, and they can actually remain infectious in the environment as well. So right now, the places that we've identified it primarily are places northeast of Grand Rapids. So Kent County, Moncom County, Northern Ionia County. We have identified it in Southern Jackson County as well. Couple other counties sort of nearby, but fortunately, not in Oakland County yet. But the the recommendation from the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention recommend that individuals not consume a deer that is tested positive for chronic wasting disease because it's in the same family of diseases as mad cow disease. And if everybody's familiar with the event that occurred in the United Kingdom in the nineties, you'll understand why. Now, that connection has never been identified with chronic wasting disease specifically, with with whitetail deer, mule deer, elk, other deer that are susceptible. But long-term studies have shown that once CWD becomes established in your deer herd, it actually can have long-term population impacts. So again, not how we want to manage our deer through diseases. So yes, it's a concern, but fortunately, not identified in Oakland County yet.
Next question is about allowing archery hunting in Southfield. On a, and I didn't consult with Chad, but on an earlier meeting we have at the DNR, they did indicate that they would allow a January archery hunt, an out-of-season, correct? And I know at one time, Plum Hollow Golf Course was interested in this as it's a large acreage, and January, obviously, nobody's out golfing. And then someone asks, are sharpshooters more accurate than bow and arrow? I guess it depends on the archer. If action is taken to reduce the number of deer, at what interval does it need to be repeated to keep the deer at a reduced level? That's a good question.
Yeah, that is a good question, and I think the answer, it's gonna sound very much like on the fence, but it depends, right? It depends what your goals are and what you're trying to measure, what the impacts are. It depends how much you need to go from point A or the starting point of your deer population to point B, where you start to achieve those impacts. So there's, there's a lot of gray area in there, and that's what we're able to help with in terms of communicating that. But at the same time, we have to have, I guess, goals to, to work with the community on. So, you know, it's, it's a great question, and I think it's one that if there is a deer committee, you know, within Southfield, or, you know, however it's done, these are questions that need to be asked. But the answer is very much going to depend based on the variables that you're measuring and where you need to go from point A to point B. So hopefully, that makes sense a little bit.
Next question, has there been any reporting of ticks in Southfield's deer herd? I don't believe we have any data.
Yeah. Say, we don't have any direct data where the city's tracking that information, but you could look to the county health department, they do track some of that. And I think there's some other groups that track tick and Lyme disease reports throughout the state. So last time I checked, I didn't see any significant concerns in Southfield in particular, but there have been a few cases of Lyme disease in Oakland County generally over the last couple of years. There you go.
So the question is, is there significant voter support for reducing the herd? And what steps would be taken by the city council? That's why this is on the ballot? As you can see, the complaints have come for a good decade about the deer herd, and they've, they've gotten louder and louder. And we haven't ignored the community concerns. Particularly tonight, when you see the amount of study that we've been doing the last few years, the aerial counts and so on. But we really feel it's in, the need for education because people can see this as an emotional issue and not necessarily see the, there's another side to deer herd reduction. So the city council will obviously weigh what happens on November eighth. We encourage you all to vote on, it'll be on the back of your ballot, way down. But we encourage you to vote because we want to use that data for future planning. And as I said earlier, the council, this is gonna, anything we do is gonna cost money. And thus, it's a council decision as to whether to engage in, in something. So at this point, I can't really answer that further. What can we homeowners do, and what other, what can we do as homeowners? Well, I, I think that's been answered with the fencing. One of the things I recommend, you can, on a garden supply, buy this black netting. Deer do not cross it. Other, the other night, when we had the community pride award, somebody was telling us that they have a sprinkler that's motion-activated and chases the deer away. I know, and it's, it's not foolproof, but I have deer in my yard. I know that the map said it was only two, it's a lot more than that. They just didn't get counted. They were hiding when the plane flew over. But again, fuzzy plants, plants with strong odors, those blue salvias that get about that high, they, they do have discerning taste. But again, too many of them, too hungry, they'll eat anything. Where would the call take place and how is that to be determined? The only thing we've, we've talked about is large, open areas, which would be in the ravines of the Rouge, or golf courses, or large parks. For instance, and I'm, this is not, I'm just saying a what-if. For instance, we could close Beechwoods. Nobody, you know, can't use the, the grounds at Beechwoods in January. I mean, I'm just saying that off the top of my head, but in some of our other large parks. And, and as I said, we've got two large golf courses in the city. Again, all of that would be determined should the council decide to act. We have a large yard.
We do.
Where, the question is about coyotes. They are a predator of deer in a pack, but we're actually seeing fewer coyotes this year than last year. I don't, I don't. Know what happened to all of them. I don't hear, this question is, I don't hear any mention about what caused this problem. That's, that's, that's a Chad problem. That's a Chad.
Yeah, so what caused, so deer are incredibly adaptable, right? They are considered an edge species. And what suburban areas and urban areas are really good with is creating edge. So there's a lot of habitat, there's a lot of safety, like we talked about the high survival rates. And we already talked about, you know, the, the deer reproduction that can occur. So once they become established in a community like this with very high survival and high reproductivity, their populations tend to explode. So this is not a, this is not a problem that is unique to Southfield or Oakland County or Michigan. There are communities all over the country that are challenged with this, with this, with this topic.
Oh, I'm sorry. We have built, built and built a, and hemmed in the deer. Are we going to consider this with future building permits? I can't answer that tonight. Well, it was, you're, you're adding, what have you built?
The whole city's built that now.
Oh. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I thought you were talking about. All right, again, this is not a debate, we're not debating anything. Everybody's got their opinion, November eighth is when you express it. There is a good question here, though, about property values. Lower property value because landscape is destroyed. That's just not true. Our property values have really, really increased in the last couple of years. And as Chad has said, this is not a Southfield problem. To think that only landscaping in Southfield is being destroyed, it, it's all over. I mean, I hear from people in West Bloomfield and Farmington that, you know, they have the same concerns and complaints. Any other, so the questions that we're skipping have really already been answered. So it's not, we're not screening them other than. Somebody asked, this is interesting. Well, I'll read it. Are we going to have or hold a pro-deer meeting? This is neither pro nor con, although we, we did need to explain why we're doing the, the ballot initiative. You've got to give people information. It's not just a matter of, oh, I like deer or I don't. There's a lot more to this, and that's what we've tried to accomplish tonight. I think we've done a great job of giving a lot of background.
I, I just want to reiterate too that. So I just want to reiterate too that the Wildlife Commission does meet every second Tuesday. The meetings are open to the public, they're in the pavilion, one of the conference rooms. And I would encourage anyone who has strong views on any side of this issue to come to the meetings and let us know what you think. We, we try and be, approach everything objectively and neutrally. We haven't had a lot of residents sending us emails or coming to the meetings, so we've largely been looking at what other communities have been doing. Six thirty P.M. every second Tuesday, or the second Tuesday of the month.
Southfield Pavilion. Oh, yeah, Conference Room A.
And it's Conference Room A, so on the south side of the building, so. But I would just encourage you to come and talk to us. You know, we've been looking at what a lot of other communities have been doing, but we've been struggling to gauge what our residents are interested in. So this was one part of that effort. I'm hopeful that we'll have more town halls and forums in the future where people can share their views. But please do come to the meetings if you'd like to.
I'd like to thank all of you for coming tonight, and particularly our, our Wildlife Commission and David, who's done an excellent job of leading it. Chad and Jacqueline, our expert witnesses or testimony. We appreciate it. Again, November eighth, we want to hear from you. Thank you.